You've got to give me the...
We're working on the buffering.
Count them in.
Count them in. Three, two, three.
I call order at this regular meeting of the Leger Town Council at 7:01. Please join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davis, Mr. Dombrowski, Mr. Eichelberg, Mrs. Ingalls, Mr. Malone, Mr. Marshall, Mrs. McGrattan, Mr. Sebelia, Mr. Soms. Seven here, two absent.
Any residents or property owners? Seeing none. Informational items? I think you all had your informational items forwarded to you on the communications. Committee commissions and board reports. Anyone? None. Okay. Comments of town councilors? I will start on my right. Nothing?
Nothing here.
Nothing, Council Eichelberg?
No.
Very good. On my left? Very good.
I will... This is your last meeting with us. Okay, then I will reserve my comments for his last meeting.
No, you can't say it.
Oh, sorry.
It's a big secret.
You were in here for the pre-brief.
Sorry.
Very good.
Sorry. Strike that.
Review and approval of minutes. The regular meeting, minutes of 25 July 2018.
So moved. Second.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Communications previously covered. Referrals? All right. Counselors, subcommittees, council subcommittees, and he is our reports. Admin?
The administration committee met earlier this evening. We went over a number of things that are on our agenda tonight. We also... Let's see. We reviewed the ordinance regulating peddlers, hawkers, street vendors, itinerant vendors, and solicitors in the town of Leger, specifically as it relates to one of the food trucks that was given a cease and desist. We found nothing that needed to be updated or was irregular with that particular ordinance. So any further action will come from the mayor or town council. And we also started discussion, preliminary discussion, preliminary preliminary discussion on merging the cemetery committee with the historic district commission. Mr. and Mrs. Gadino were there, expressed their opinion. We're looking forward to hearing the opinion of any of the other people who are involved in this. And let's see. I think everything else that we moved on tonight is in our agenda later. That's my report.
Any questions for admin? Finance. Nothing from finance unless you have anything? Land use, planning, and public works?
Land use did meet. Well, we did not have a quorum. We did take some public comment on the noise ordinance, which is in front of us right now. More specifically, Chief Rich expresses opinion again, basically saying that he felt that there was no need for a noise ordinance, that there were sufficient avenues through state statutes that already exist in order to control any noise issues in town. He also was concerned about if we set an ordinance that we have to have some sort of public hearing or public body to be set up to hear appeals, totally decision, whereas if you just use state statute, then that gets handled through the courts. And so the method of the law already exists for those avenues. The only other thing we discussed was an email that I received from Dennis Main from Avalonia regarding the land that they're interested in transferring from the town to Avalonia. One parcel on Christie Hill Road in Pacific is an issue going on because it's a parcel that's probably worth about $5,000, but currently has about a $40,000 lien against it from the state for environmental cleanup. Avalonia feels that they could get, that the state would waive having the town or Avalonia having to pay that fee if we transferred the land over to a conservancy and sell as open space, but we don't, to this to date, neither one of us have a letter from the state saying that that's true. So trying to figure ways to move forward, at least on the other parcels that they have that they're actually working on. That's really all that we've discussed.
Any questions for land use, planning, or public works? Liaison reports? On my right? Nothing? On my left? No BOE? Very good. Report the mayor.
Oh, nice, quiet summer. I like that.
So far.
All right. So I'll give you a quick update on paving and line striping. We've done the Berry Drive, Richard Road, Meadow Lane, Richard Court, and one part of King's Highway on that west side, I guess it is, of Route 12. We also did a short piece out on Colonel Leger towards the library before Ray Holdridge Circle, and then we did the micro resurfacing from approximately the high school all the way down to the Mystic, Groton Mystic, Leger line. That's turned out pretty well. They moved pretty quick with that process, and that's supposed to, I guess, about seven years on that. So it's not, it's not the same smooth surface that you get from a typical, you know, mill and resurfaced asphalt, but, you know, financially, it does the job pretty well for us. We also got Hilltop done, which is right off of Route 214 up here, and there are two roads in Sherwood Forest subdivision, Gales Ferry, that Steve's trying to get to if we can squeeze them into the budget this year, too. Good news from Kerma. They came and brought us a nice, healthy member payment check for $40,156. We had very low claims last year, as did a number of other communities in, that participate in Kerma. So it's kind of like USAA where they, you know, they'll pay out kind of a dividend, and that's what they did for us here, too, which is great. Update on the former Leger Police Department. As you're probably well aware, we've had four various title defects on that that stopped our closing. We're down to one title defect that we cannot eliminate, so that, I believe, will be coming up for further discussion later in the agenda. The mobile station over here, which is a leased portion of the Holdridge property, is announced that they are going to be closing next week. So they're going to close, and they are, they've already applied for a demolition permit and the permit to remove the tanks. So they're going to remove the building, remove the tanks, cap it off, and be done. So that station will go away, leaving the one at Village Market. Update on the senior housing project that's known as Churchill Woods at the corner of Churchill and Spicer Hill Road or Colonel Leger. It's about a 62-unit project. The Leger Congregational Church has been trying to advance this by way of Dave Holdridge and others. We, we had a meeting with senators and representatives recently, and we're going to be meeting next week at the Legislative Office Building with the Commissioner of Housing to try to get that project back on track. What has happened is that they, they started moving ahead. They had an agreement with Department of Housing, understanding that it was a senior housing project, and this year, the Department of Housing changed the rules and said that their primary focus now is workforce housing, and the senior housing is at the bottom of the list. So they can move ahead the way it is, but they're not going anywhere. So we're going to either plead with the Department of Housing for a waiver of that, given that they've, they're already years into this process and design work, or they're going to look at changing what the project is to still allow it to advance. So I'll give you an update after next Wednesday's meeting. Solar update, I could probably leave this to Andra. We had one today. The WPCA wastewater treatment facility solar project should be functional and, and running by mid-September. So they're moving along. Next week, they're going to start driving the pilings, the pilings that support the solar project down there. And we had a pretty interesting meeting today, too, with Commercial Solar Works regarding some other avenues that the town can pursue for solar projects on rooftops and including replacement rooftops, which is very interesting. The State Treasurer's Big List. I decided to visit the Big List to find out who in my family was on the Big List, meaning people that have money held up by the State Treasurer. But I also checked on the town of Leger, and lo and behold, we have $61,000 on the Big List.
Wow.
So this, it's amazing, but this money was, this was money that was in our prior pension fund manager. They had purchased various stocks, and when we left that pension fund, they left this substantial, it was actually just over $60,000 worth of stock, and it was kind of abandoned for several years. So the stock was sold, and now there's $60,500 and something dollars sitting there. So we've already made the claim for it, so now we're, when we receive it, we're going to add that back into the pension funding, which is, it should be a nice boost for the defined benefit pension plan. I had a meeting Thursday with Steve Mansfield, the Director of Leger Light Health District. We've had a number of lengthy delays in the permitting process in Leger. Four to five weeks is not uncommon for a Leger Light permit, and the building department is required to, to deny a building permit after 30 days. So we've had a couple cases already where the building permit, they've started the process, then it goes to Leger Light, and now the 30 days pass, and our building department official is required to, to deny it, and then the people have to pay a fee to resubmit, which I think is grossly unfair because we're waiting for somebody. So I had that meeting, and he put out an email to the entire Leger Light staff saying that they are, they have to work harder at getting these things processed in a timely manner, and I gave him some recommendations for things to, ways to streamline it, you know? As an example, of, an application comes in, it didn't include a piece of information, but it sat on somebody's desk for three weeks before that person picked up the application to then say, oh, they're missing something. So then the call is made. So I said, why isn't there somebody putting a set of eyes on these applications right when they come in to look right down that list? Do they have A, B, C, D, and E? And if they don't get to them right away, so that we don't lose three weeks just waiting for somebody to put a set of eyes on it. Parks and Rec Summer Camp, they're winding down. They did really an amazing job this year, and most of their registrations happened online, including paying for it. EDC meeting last night, the Business Directory Poll, you might have seen that over at the corner of the Bill Library, 117. It's up. It's further back on Colonel Leger than I would like, but it's where it has to be, I guess, to be out of the states right away. So the sign is, is going to just be single-sided, so, and it'll be reflective, so headlights coming north will be able to see those signs. And what they've decided is to make the signs somewhat generic. So it may say Shopping District, it may say Restaurant, but it's not going to identify a restaurant. It may say Winery, who won't identify who, and the idea being that we are only allowed to put nine sign panels on this very extravagant sign. And so we have more than nine businesses in Leger Center, and somebody would ultimately be left off. So the better, we felt a better opportunity was to just make it somewhat generic with some, some arrows directing them to where they're located. Another idea that came out of that, and I'm hoping we can advance this somehow, is a, it's what's called a community calendar. Jennifer Holdsworth presented this idea, and they have one in Colchester, and it's a sign, and it has individual panels on it. And let's say it's the Rotary Car Club, or the Rotary Car Show. They would be allowed to put a sign up there that would say Rotary Classic Car Show and the date, or Memorial Day Parade, or whatever the activity is. So we're going to see if that might be something that we could do up there in that little arched-in stone wall area right there in Leger Center. And the last thing, and this was a good news piece, too, the Frontier Communications owns the piece of land at the corner of 214 and 117. And it had been driving me crazy because the sidewalk was about this wide from everything growing in, and you couldn't even walk on that sidewalk. So I went on Frontier's website, and I read their mission statement, which says that they're very active in their communities that they serve, and they view themselves as partners. So I took a couple pictures of how it looked, printed them in color, included a nice little letter, and I said, you know, as part of your community service, sure would like to see this cleaned up. And they had, over the last two days, they had a couple contractors out there cutting the brush back and getting it cleaned up, so. I was happy to see that finally happen, and it's been a long time coming, but I was able to locate Frontier's real estate division down in Norwalk, and they made it happen, so I'll send them a thank you, too. And that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for the mayor?
I forgot to get this out under Counselor Comment, so, Mr. Mayor, when is the primary election?
Next, oh, that's, good point, next, next Tuesday, August 14.
14.
And where is it?
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Your voting districts are Leger Center School still, and Juliette Long.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Excellent point.
Thank you, Council Eichelberg. Any other questions or comments?
Can I add to that? And the voting is only for registered Republicans and registered Democrats. It's not for independents.
Important note. Thank you very much. It is, because people will show up, and they're not party affiliated.
Right.
And, you know, that kind of disenfranchises people if they don't know. So thank you, Councilman Grant. Any other questions or comments for the mayor? Okay, any old business? Does anybody want to amend the agenda under new business?
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add the following. A motion to appropriate $450 from account 10110101, tax 568790, council contingency to promote recycling efforts in the town of Leger.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Just to add an item to the agenda.
So this is to provide some money to, pretty much...
Yep, but it's just, all we're doing right now is adding it to the agenda.
Understand. Roxanne, we call the roll.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
And the item will be added under number four, under Administrative Committee. All right. Admin Committee.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Hillary Evans, Democrat of 39G Flintlock Road, Leger, as an alternate member to the Planning and Zoning Commission to complete the three-year term ending 31 October 2020, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Rasmussen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Maslow, for his service.
Absolutely. And thank you, Ms. Evans, for stepping up.
Any other discussion? Or none? Roxanne, we call the roll.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
I have number two.
Motion to adopt ordinance amendments combining ordinances number 38, number 75, number 100, ordinances regulating parking and other activities in town roads and rights of way, and providing penalties for the violation thereof as contained in the draft dated January 31, 2018.
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, so we had a presentation from Director of Public Works, Steve Maslin, this evening. Effectively, this just combines the ordinances, smoothes the language a little bit, but doesn't really do much more than that, and it adds a little bit of language about people parking or vacating vehicles in excess of 10 days in rights of way, and allows the town to go and say, hey, you need to get those things out of there. Also adds a little bit of language about who is responsible when a contractor or a homeowner pushes snow from their driveway out into the right-of-way, and that's pretty much it.
Questions, comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
I have number three.
Make a motion to adopt the proposed amendments to ordinance number 41, ordinance amending an ordinance, adopting the Connecticut bizarre raffle and bingo law to comply with Public Act 17-231 as contained in the draft dated June 4, 2018.
Second.
Discussion?
And again, we had a presentation from Chief Rich this evening, and effectively, what we're doing is complying with state ordinance. The chief's office has already picked this up. They are handling it. He said they get on order of about 10 of these a year, and really not a big deal, just, like I said, coming in compliance with state ordinance.
Questions, discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
New item number four, just added.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to appropriate $450 from account 10110101, dash 568790, council contingency to promote recycling efforts in the town of Leger.
Second.
So this is actually an item that was requested by Chairman Davis to put a brochure in the Parks and Recs, or an ad in the Parks and Recs brochure that comes out, to kind of help with the recycling. One of the biggest issues that we have in town is people think that the plastic bags you get from the grocery stores or the department stores are recyclable, when in fact they are not collected by a recycling. So we're apt to put an ad like this into the, put that up, so, publicly, an ad that looks like this could be put into the Parks and Rec flyer. They're basically saying, hey, these, these plastic bags cannot be put into the recycling bin, but also puts a note on the bottom that says, hey, bring them back to the retailer where you got them from. And I didn't realize that either until, matter of fact, the other day I came home from the grocery store, and it actually says on the bag, bring it back to the retailer.
Right. So...
And participating retailers who do collect the bags for recycling. But we don't, our recycling doesn't allow for collection of those plastic bags.
And we've been doing that for years in my house, and it doesn't, you know, if you have a Stop &amp; Shop or a Big Y or, you know, Dollar Store, just put them all in one big bag, and you can take them to Stop &amp; Shop or Big Y or wherever, and they will take them, which for military members and retired, the commissary has one of those as well. So you can take it back to there as well.
This is just a little, you know, you can recycle them, just don't put them in your blue bins, take them back to the stores.
And that goes for the little, like, the plastic bags, like, when you go to the, I'm on this thing because it's, it's a big thing to me. So, you know, like, when you get your fruits and vegetables and whatever, and you put them in the clear plastic bag? If you empty those out, you can put those in there as well. So it's not just the colored bags that they give you when you leave the market, it's the little bags for the fruits and vegetables and stuff like that. Been doing it for years, and it really cuts down on your regular garbage.
Yeah.
And your recycling.
I just had the Housing Authority meeting the other night, and some of the residents were there, and they're all very willing to recycle, but everyone had a different idea about what is recyclable. So I think that we really need to do a good education.
Yeah, and to your point, I mean, we actually, Roxanne, you follow the letter that Steve Maslin had pointed out, is the, from the, from Willamette Waste on recycling, again, the load inspections that were done with those photographs of different various things that are not recyclable, although people think they are.
Like a grill.
Like a grill. It's not recyclable. Metal, but it's not recyclable. So, but people don't know.
That's right.
So we need to find a venue to help educate our residents of what can and cannot go in the blue bins.
Put your K-TAC grill to Connecticut Salvage and get a couple dollars for it.
Right, right.
For the steel.
Yes, for the, right, for the steel. I mean, and I probably have to admit myself that it's the wishful recycling, hey, it's plastic, it's got to go in, you know? I'm thinking probably every one of us has done it, and probably everyone in town has done it as well, trying to sit there and go, what do you mean, this is recyclable? And it may be, it does not...
Some of it just doesn't really pass the basic common sense test.
Some of it doesn't. I don't disagree.
But to Chairman Davis's point about this particular ad, when we went, when SCARA did the, the public presentation on recycling, I think several of us who attended that night realized it's far more complicated than, and then I think we all wish it was, but this particular item, the grocery bags, is such a common offender that it's a good one, it's a simple one to go after. And so many people align their, you know, you know, we use them, we use those little grocery bags to align all our smaller trash cans, so it's easy to just bundle it up and, and think it should go in there, but, but no.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Roxanne?
Mrs. Ingalls?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
I'll make a motion to recommend the town of Leger adjust the sale price. Town-owned property located in Southern Lawrence Parkway, former police building, approximately 5.04 acres, to Mr. Paul Reglio, Crest Mechanical Services, or his assignments of Weatherfield, Connecticut, as approved at special town meeting held on June 13, 2018, from $190,000 to $125,000 to reflect title defects that cannot be resolved.
Second.
All right.
I'll turn it over to the mayor.
So, as I mentioned earlier, we had, we were, we were on the path to closing. The attorney did the title search, four title defects came up. One of them was a, a former driveway going up the side that provided access to an adjacent parcel with no deeded access. So that needed to be cut off, which we did. There was a piece of land that is owned by the town of Leger that was being mowed and maintained by Arc of New London County. We had to send them a letter saying, please stop mowing our grass, which they did. The third one was, what was that third one? Holy cow. It was, oh, I know, the third one was, there's a public water line in the street, and there was never a water assessment associated with that water line, and they needed verification that a, an assessment wouldn't all of a sudden be forthcoming after we conveyed the property. So we were able to provide a letter from WPCA and the tax assessor stating that that would not be assessed that way. The fourth one was the Stumper. And back in 1982, I believe it was, the owner of the property at the time, Ed Lorenz, expanded an existing barn and created his shop there for the AZ Corporation. He ended up building into then CLMP's 125-foot right-of-way. CLMP did not like that, so it went to court, and the court decided with a stipulated judgment that if CLMP ever needed the owner of the property, Ed Lorenz, now us, to demolish a portion of the building to get it out of the right-of-way or the easement that we would be required to at our cost. The buyer was not excited about that at all, as you can imagine. It involved about a 15-foot-deep section of the building on the left, 25 feet over from the left side to the right, so it's not inconsequential. So we contacted now Eversource, who owns the easement, and they researched it, and they understood what was involved, and they said, we are not, we tried to get them to reduce their easement area, and they said, absolutely not, we're not doing that. It takes a miracle for them to get these easements, and these are transmission lines. So that wasn't going to happen. So I decided to meet with the prospective buyer and say, what works? And we had a, we had a very frank conversation, and basically he said, look, I buy this building, I have to buy it for a price that reflects what somebody else is going to go through when I go to sell it, which is saying, holy cow, I might have to demolish a 15 by 25-foot s... a 15-by-25-foot section of this building if Eversource says, take it down. So his, his offer was $125,000, and he said, no more, no less. This is what works for me. So I also included for you as an attachment, the, a map, a tax parcel map. And that map shows the wetlands overlay, the 75-foot centerline setback from Route 117, a blue line around the wetlands, which is the 25-foot non-disturbance area, and a purple dashed line, which is the 125-foot Eversource easement. When you look at what's left on what is, what is kind of colored white on our parcel, it doesn't leave you a whole lot. So I kind of looked at that and said, we don't have a whole lot here. So I told the gentleman that made the offer, I think you've got a very fair proposal, and I will bring it back to the council and see if we can advance it and, and get to closing. I don't know how, by the way, don't know how, our title attorney or our closing attorney for the town didn't pick this up when the town of Leger bought it because we only bought it two years after the judgment. It should have been real easy. Yeah, it should have been right on top of the, the title chain, so. That's that. Yes, sir?
So I'm looking here at our map, and I'm looking at building number five here, the 1.79 acres. And that's what we're talking about, right?
No, we're talking about seven.
Building seven.
The one with the blue right through the middle of the property.
Five is the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, holy smokes.
Is he getting?
That's a problem.
I wish we had five.
On number seven.
I couldn't even see seven because there's.
Isn't it even?
Right.
It's a problem.
Wow.
Yeah.
Question, Mayor Fred?
Yes, sir.
Any issues with financing?
No, it's a cash deal. So it's not going to encumber this one. It will encumber future sales. So if he goes to sell it to somebody else and it's not a cash deal, he could face an issue.
And he knows that risk, and that's why he, he made that price.
What is he going to do with it, or what would he like to do with it?
He's going to keep a portion for his own use and try to lease the rest as either separate offices or contractor space.
What's the part of the easement?
It's real ugly.
Oh, good luck.
Thank you.
Actually, we got a path forward.
Yeah, that's, honestly, that's.
So the good, the good means out of this.
Yeah, I'm glad you saw the, I'm glad you saw the positive on it, Kevin, because honestly, I thought, is this something that we could be saddled with?
So this is, to, to, to my perspective, I look at this, and I go, hey, this is a path forward where we can eliminate or remove this unused property from town rolls. Yes, it's not for the original asking price, but I'm, I'm still okay with it.
Yeah.
Me, too.
It's a path forward to get this back on the tax rolls, my.
Yep, I agree.
Any other questions or comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinkles?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Next item.
I make a motion to set a public hearing date of August 22, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers, annexed building 741, Krenley Highway, according to Connecticut General Statute 7, Tax 163E, to receive comments or recommendations concerning the following. To adjust the sale price of town-owned property located at 7 Lorenz Parkway, Leger, former police facility, approximately 5.04-plus acres, Mr. Paul Breglio, Crest Mechanical Services, or his assignments of Weatherfield, Connecticut, as approved at a special town meeting held on June 13, 2018, from $190,000 to $125,000 to reflect title defects that cannot be resolved.
Second.
So this is simply setting the public hearing date for the aforementioned.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinkles?
Yes.
Mr. Malone?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Six.
I make a motion to set a special town meeting date on August 22, 2018, at 6:15 PM in the council chambers, annexed building 741, Krenley Highway. Leger, to consider and discuss and vote upon the following. Shall the town allegedly adjust the sale price of town-owned property located at 7 Lorenz Parkway, Leger, former police department facility, approximately 5.04-plus acres, to Mr. Paul Breglio, Crest Mechanical Services, or his assignments of Weatherfield, Connecticut, as approved at a special town meeting held on June 13, 2018, from $190,000 to $125,000 to reflect title defects that cannot be resolved?
Second.
And once again, this is simply setting the special town meeting because it is a sale of town property requires us to do this at a town meeting.
Okay.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Sebelia?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinkles?